I spent twenty minutes.
That's right.
Oh. See, I don't know how much I have left. Hey, Cindy.
Five bucks.
You have access to how much I have left now. Hey, Virginia. Did you know we voted on and it passed the ten thousand dollar contribution to the? And Lisa's already got the invoice and I think it's already been held to her.
Yes, we'll also thank you for the internet calls.
Oh, you don't, you don't need to. I mean, hey, it's city money, it's just a great public conference. Everybody loved it, showed a picture of it.
Oh, most.
And everybody loved it. Really, really liked it a lot. And of course, they know it's not going to go in until we're finished out. You know I'm not running again, right? I told you.
I don't like that.
You'll love the new. You'll talk. But anyway, really thrilled with it. And, um. And every machine, didn't y'all, didn't y'all think that was really nice? The sand.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it still.
We did. Sand four, yeah, sand four. Sand four, I know. I get that all the time. Sand fours or flosses. All right.
Go ahead and call to order. Are we ready? Okay, go ahead and call to order the name of San Francisco Commission for Monday, June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. First order of business is legislative prayer by Pastor Franklin. That is now, uh, Saifar Christian Tark. Just bow our heads. Father, we come before you tonight, just thanking you for your mercy and your gifts. We ask that as the commission meets tonight, that you allow this to be a, a productive meeting that does your work here in the city of Sanford. Because we know that in the Bible, it says that you have placed all leaders in the places that they are. And so, Father, we just thank you and we honor you in the mighty name of Jesus. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, family.
As a little way, um, how to come into our.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm the City Commissioner. I've asked Chief Smith to come and introduce some of our newer police officers here to perhaps a number of swearing in through the last couple of weeks. And I thought it would be good for the City Commission to see the new offices and for the new officers to see the City Commission. So with that, Chief Smith.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, Community. One of the things that we have been, uh, working diligently on is, uh, bringing in new officers. Uh, we've always looked at the fact that, uh, experienced officers is one of the most important things that we can, uh, bring on. And that's because we have the ability to get those officers up to speed relatively quick and on the street. As you should know, when we have someone who was going through the academy, that academy is about five and a half months long, then another four to five months while they're at FTL, before we have an opportunity to get those officers on the street. So essentially, we actually lose about a year with those officers. Because we had an opportunity to bring on veteran officers who've been in the field for a number of years, we have that ability to expedite much of their training, mostly because a lot of the language we speak, whether it's in north, northern, uh, Florida or southern Florida, we all speak the same language to a certain point. It's just the ability for them to get up to speed with our whole ordinances, streets, and the things that we're doing here. But before I introduce, uh, the officers, I want to have, uh, Lieutenant Lehman come up. As most of you know, uh, Tina was a sergeant a couple of months ago, and most recently, she was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. She began her career with the Police Department in two thousand, uh, known as our resident scholar within the organization. She got her doctorate, so we call her Dr. Lehman many times. She's a recent graduate from Northwestern University School of Police Staff to Command, where I will tell you, that's one of the more difficult police, uh, staff to command schools where you'd go to. She spent twenty-two weeks in the process of graduating from that academy. And, uh, she has taken over the lieutenant's position in professional standards and, uh, our, our community relations unit. Next is Sergeant Shannon Nellis. Sergeant Nellis was promoted the same day as Tina was promoted. Began her career with the San Police Department in two thousand fifteen in patrol unit. Uh, in two thousand twenty, she was transferred to general investigations, and in May of this year, she was promoted to self-position of sergeant. I will tell you a little bit about her real quickly. She's a mother of two. Um, probably one of the hardest-working, uh, officers in the department. She has led a number of investigations, including a number of homicides that have taken place within our organization. She has been a huge team leader and team member within the organization for a number of years. And it's, uh, it's great to see that she has had the opportunity to move up in her career within the organization. Uh, new officer, Officer Pedro. Self, Officer Silva. There you go, okay. Worked in law enforcement for the city of Winter Springs. Uh, he brings fifteen years of security experience, as well as a number of years with, uh, Winter Springs Police Department. To my media right. I was going to say, hold your applause until we're done. It's all good.
I appreciate it.
It's all good. Uh, to my media right is Officer Dave Johnson, uh, who came to us from the Monroe Sheriff's Department. She has thirteen years of experience, including dispatching, victims advocacy, field training, and investigative unit. Uh, when I say Monroe County, uh, you should think about Key West area. So when I say we're getting folks from up north and from down south who are coming to the central Florida to, uh, contribute our agency. Abraham Rodriguez. Worked in patrol with the city of Miami before listening to the United States Army National Guard as an infantryman. I'm gonna leave it alone. He was deployed to Qatar and the Jordan Syria border back in two thousand twenty, and he joined us as well, bringing a number of years of experience in law enforcement from South Florida. And Officer Carlos Ruiz has been an officer in the Ocal Police Department since two thousand sixteen. At the time, he was a field training officer and worked in street crime. So, again, a, a, uh, opportunity for us to go out and reach out to, uh, other agencies, those who are looking to do something a little different, having an opportunity to expand our, uh, department with veteran officers who will have an opportunity to impart the information that they have, that they're bringing into the organization for our young officers. I think Officer Pierre. There's one of our newer officers who's just kind of hanging out in the background. He's been around a little bit longer than, uh, everyone else has. So I give you our newest, uh, additions to the San Francisco Police Department.
I want to commend Chief Smith for bringing the diversity of experienced officers and a wide variety of different kinds of officers. It's making the Sanford Police Department a premier police department within the state of Florida. At the last swearing in our event, there were three new police officers, all of which are by the name of.
Wow.
So that's allowing us to reach out to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Gina.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations again. You, you deserve, you deserve every, all the best.
I appreciate it. Super proud, Tina.
So that will bring us to the minutes for the June ten twenty-four work session.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not sure if it's not working well.
That's what I think. It's. That was the one that y'all were making me sit in for months, and I just decided it was time for this big guy who makes the decisions.
I'm switching it back to you after the meeting.
It's horrible. You're sitting seriously about how bad it is. It's my good time. They need to be all put this back.
All right, um, we're going to, I'm thinking before the commission to facilitate public input. If you plan to speak on an item, if you are pleased, complete one of the yellow citizens' input forms, which are found in the back of the room, and submit it to the city clerk. Um, that will help us keep track of, um, who will be speaking. Um, and we'll also ask that you state your name and address for the record before speaking in the public. Will you be given an opportunity to speak on any item before the City Commission's during the regular meeting? For the consent agenda, I will ask if anyone has any comments on any of those items during public hearings. Um, at each one, I will have an opportunity to give the opportunity for people to speak. And for regular items, um, if you have not filled yet, all yellow cards, if you would just raise your hand when you're with an audience you want to speak to, um, we will allow you to speak. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker on each item, except the person representing the organization and presenting its views during a judicial hearing. You'll be allowed five minutes. At the end of the meeting, a citizen participation, where individuals may address the commission on any topic, um, that is not on the agenda, and there is a five-minute time limit for those comments. So that brings us to consent agenda. Is anyone in the audience wish to speak on any item on the consent agenda? I'll bring in commission for items A through L.
Move to further.
I'll second that, uh, but then I want to discuss a couple of them.
Which ones?
The battle of the branches. And. I believe the old central logic. F, F, G, and maybe H.
The car show?
Yeah.
Do you want to pull?
F, G, and H.
I don't want to pull, I just want to discuss, uh. I want to approve the whole thing. I'm not, I'm not trying not to approve anything, I just want to discuss.
Okay, well, let's. So let's pull those, and can the motion be for A through E and I through L?
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass or no? Okay. F.
I'm curious why we, uh, are making, uh, some of these businesses go through this process. Um, F is during the day, ends at four P M. We're making them get a noise permit, and they're, uh, um, they back up to I four.
Right.
And in front of them is a noisy, noisy car dealership.
Yeah. I agree, it's right there, and it's in their own business.
Right, they're doing their event on their own property. Um, I ju, I just feel like, uh, sometimes we, we are not.
It's how we define special event. Ms. Jones is going to explain that.
Good evening, Ms. Commissioner, Mr. Paul, Mr. Paul, Lisa Jones, Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, you are indeed correct. Uh, these layouts are, uh, in simple terms, it's out in their parking lot, but their parking lot is being used for something other than parking. There will be vendors, entertainment, uh, in some cases, outdoor alcohol sales or consumption, and that's why it goes through the process.
Okay, but why the noise permit? Uh, particularly the battle of the branches, the DJ is going to be inside the building.
Right. Um, we've been dealing, uh, working closely with the owners of the tactical business there, and there's been some fluid movement in those items, so we thought it best to go ahead and cover any outdoor amplification that they may have.
Okay, so. So again, uh, the car dealership has amplified noise all day and all night. Do they apply for a permit daily?
Uh, I'm unaware of, that's just car activity, that wouldn't fall under our permit.
I'm sorry?
If it's just car activity.
No, they have loudspeakers on their property.
Oh, I'm unaware.
Holler all day long.
We would have to look into that.
Same thing, uh, the auto auction that now backs up to my neighborhood hollers all day long. Um, the drive-through restaurants that back up to our neighborhoods holler all day long. Uh, what I don't understand why an event from eleven to four, you have to get a noise permit to have an event on your own property. Again, you're not, you're not affecting any residents there, not a single one.
That is currently how the ordinance and code stands, sir. Um, I can only tell you that if it were to be any residents out there, or if it were in a different location in the city, I don't know what that buffer zone would be, uh, other than what we have it now.
How much is the noise permit?
I think it's ten dollars.
But you have to go through this whole rigamarole process as well.
But that would, I mean, that's based on what our ordinance says, is basically a special event involves anything using property for things other than what it's.
Designed for.
Designed for.
During the part of this.
Where you will be doing advertising to the public and bringing people into an area where they usually are not. So you can advertise your business, to do something in business, suppose you're advertising something that's trying to be outside of your normal business, that's what our code requires. So if you want to change that, we would need to change the code.
Well, but this, this goes back to, uh, one of the things that I've complained about for a couple of years now, when we started doing this to Texas Roadhouse also. Um, we, we are counterintuitive to business in this city. Doing events is crucial to these businesses to be able to survive. And then you got to go through this, this red tape, you got to pay fees, because they're paying way more than ten dollars.
And that's just one of the permits, yes, sir.
They sell alcohol on that property all the time, but we're charging them a fee to be able to have alcohol on their property.
Yes, sir. Um, respectively, those are, is your footprint that you have filed with the DDPR. So if that is just for the footprint of your building, uh, we're trying to assist those business owners so that they don't put their license in peril.
If I threw a party at my house, I'm not getting a permit.
Are you advertising it to the public?
I might.
You need a permit.
I might.
Only the viewers today.
Mr. Armando, put his address on your listing places. Check.
He already came and took my chickens. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
My question is.
So. Thank you. I mean, I question that, you know, we may be a little overboard on, on some of the things, but it really would be that we need to take a look at the ordinance and see if we can loosen it up.
I mean, it, it would be one thing if they didn't have a gigantic footprint, and they have plenty of parking left over. It's not like they're, like, anybody around them is going to be affected by extra cars that day, or the parking lot being used, so it just.
But how do you write that into code?
I don't know.
You don't have to get a comment if you have a really good question.
Yeah.
Well, maybe there's a percentage, I don't know.
I can make, that's something we want to look at this time. Okay, so, any questions on F, G, or H?
No, no, sir, it, it all applied, all of them.
You have said, we have a motion on F, G, and H.
Move to approve.
Sir.
Motion second, approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your first reading of ordinance, um, forty-seven eighty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, providing for rezoning of parks or real property, zoning approximately two point nine six acres in size, located thirty-seven fifty Law Avenue, which property is located within the Sanford city limits, from Seminole County Agriculture to land development, providing for findings and intent, providing for rotation of the, implementing administrative actions, providing for adoption of math I reference, providing for complex, providing for severability, providing for non-qualification, providing for an effective.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, on June sixth, twenty twenty-four, the city's planning and zoning commission voted to recommend that the City Commission approve the first reading of the request to rezonate two point nine six acres at the project address of forty-seven fifty Law Avenue and twenty-eight fifty East State Mary Boulevard, from agriculture to Seminole County to Sandy Farm, which is the city of Sanford.
This is a matter involving a judicial process, thus, the commission must disclose all aspect of communication, including the name of the communicator and the time, place, and substance of communication and communications, thus be disclosed and made a part of the record before final act is taken. Commissioners' investigation site with the, um, recid expert opinions must also be disclosed and made a part of the record. Persons who have opinions contrary to the impressed and, or written aspect of communication must be given a reasonable chance to refute or respond to communication at the hearing. The parties to this proceeding are the city staff and the applicant, and they are subject to cross-examination unless given their testimony under oath. Others who seek party status are also subject to cross-examination. Persons only participating by providing comments are not subject to cross-examination and are not sworn and evidentiary with qualifications as the city staff or be established in the city to exercise or be submitted at the hearing. And I'm going to read that one time tonight to cover all of our cause of judicial hearings, and I would assume whether they're, what they initial one would give to them. Mr. Colby, are you, uh? Clearing witness list at this point? For the parties. Do we have any parties that wish to be sworn on this side? All right, this is a public hearing, anyone from the audience wish to speak to the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing, bring in commission direction.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion?
That would have to be space. Don't have to say.
Do you have anything on this item?
No, I do not.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to disclose on this item? So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass or no? Please, to your first reading of ordinance forty-seven eighty-nine, Mr. Porter.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, annexing a voluntary petition, certain real property generally addressed as forty-sixty East State Road forty-six, but they are contiguous to the city of Sanford in accordance with the voluntary execution provisions of section one seven one, one oh four four Florida statutes. Free to find new boundaries, city of Sanford, the approved set property, the many boundaries in the city, providing for the provisions of section one sixty-six oh three one Florida statutes, providing for finding, providing for conditions, directing city clerk to court your ordinance with the clerk circuit court of the chief administrative office of Seminole County with the Department of State, providing for legal description of the map, providing incorporation of that exhibit, clearing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing non-qualification, taking administrative actions as a result of effective.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, the city staff have renewed the request on the nation, and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. Therefore, the city staff recommendation, the commission approved, first reading of ordinance forty-seven eighty-nine to annex six point one six acres located at forty sixty East State Road sixty forty-six as legally described into the city of Sanford.
This is a public hearing, anyone from the audience wish to speak to the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing, bring in commission direction.
Move to approve. Second.
Last second, people with a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass or no? This is first reading of ordinance forty-seven ninety.
This ordinance is entitled, excuse me. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, meaning the city of Sanford, Complan, is previously amended, providing for amendment to the future land use map of the future land use elements of the city of Sanford, Complan, relevant to certain real property, approximately six point one six acres in size, owned by the Orion Properties, L O C, said property being addressed forty sixty East State Road forty-six, providing for the future land use designation to be amended from commercial to general commercial, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for assignment of the land use designation for the property, providing for severability, providing for ratification of prior acts of the city, providing for complex, providing for qualification, direction to the court of fire, providing for effective.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, on June the sixth of twenty twenty-four, the city's planning and zoning commission voted to recommend that the city commission approve the request to amend the future land use from commercial to general, to general commercial. It is the staff's finding that a small scale land use amendment is appropriate and suitable for the subject site and is comparable with the surrounding area uses.
This is a public hearing, anyone from the audience wish to speak to the side? Anyone opposed to public hearing, bring in commission direction.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass or no? This is to ordinance forty-seven ninety-one, Mr. Porter.
Ordinance entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, providing for rezoning of certain real property, approximately six point one six acres in size, owned by the city. Which property is located within the Sanford city limits, addressed as forty sixty East State Road forty-six, from retail commercial to general commercial, providing for findings and intent, providing for taking of implemented administrative actions, providing for adoption of a map I reference, providing for complex, providing for severability, providing for non-qualification, providing for an effective.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, on February fourth, first of twenty twenty-four, as regularly stated in the city's planning and zoning commission voted to recommend that the City Commission approve the first reading of ordinance number forty-seven ninety-one to rezonate six point one six acres located at forty sixty East State Road forty-six from retail commercial to general commercial, based on consistency with the joint pending agreement, the East State Mary Court of Study, and the city of Sanford's comprehensive plan.
I believe we have a copy and paste error in the title of the ordinance, because this is not entered by the city.
Yes.
That's corrected by the second reading. And this is very judicial. If anyone has anything to disclose.
Has none.
No, no. Are there any parties that are going to want to speak? This is a public hearing, is anyone from the audience wish to speak? Anyone opposed to public hearing, bring in commission.
Move to further.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass or no? Brings us to ordinance forty-seven ninety-two.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, meaning the city of Sanford, Complan, previously amended, providing for amendment to the future land use map of the future land use element of the city of Sanford, Complan, relevant to certain real property, approximately five point seven seven acres in size, owned by Christians, Sharon Center, and Dale and Company. Said property being addressed as sixty-four ninety-eight North Normal Region, providing for the future land use designation to be amended from low-density residential, single-family, to neighborhood, to commercial, to general commercial, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for the assignment of the land use designation for the property, providing for several blocks, finding the ratification of prior acts of the city, providing for complex, providing for qualification, direction to the court of fire, providing for effective.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, at the June sixth, twenty twenty-four planning and zoning commission meeting, the city's planning and zoning commission voted to recommend that the City Commission approve the first reading of ordinance forty-seven ninety-two. The staff finds that the small scale land use amendment is appropriate and suitable for the subject site and is comparable with the surrounding land use and is consistent with the city of Sanford, Complan, the joint pending agreement, the East State Mary Small Area Study, and the chapter one sixty-three of the Florida statutes. Area Study, and the chapter one sixty three of the Florida statutes.
Chris, do we have a map that shows which part has which future land use? Can't find that in mine.
Are you comfortable enough standing there because we've got a little thing we can pull out?
I can probably pull this.
Okay, okay. If there's anything we can do to make it come along with you, let us know. There you go.
Or you can just come in and talk to me.
Good.
Any of that down or is it single family?
Yes, sir.
So where that red line is?
Okay. All right. All right. So this is public hearing. You are the applicant. Would like to go ahead?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Scott Banta, ninety seven Hickory Tree Road, Longwood, Florida, representing the Sharing Center. I'm here to say that we enjoyed working with your staff on coming up with a plan that was acceptable to the city and matched everything required in the P U D. I'm also very happy to speak to you about, a little bit about the Sharing Center if I can take a couple of seconds and do a commercial. The Sharing Center's been in Seminole County for over thirty seven years. I think probably, and most, many of you are familiar with them. Last year, they've served over twenty thousand people in Seminole County. Over the, since, over the thirty seven years, they've served over four hundred and seventy thousand people in Seminole County. We have six thousand volunteers and last year had fifty five thousand volunteer hours of service to the community. This product development is seventy nine units of what we call workforce achievable housing, whereby it's basically to serve the missing mill. So it will be under market rents, but it will be a rental apartment complex. The Sharing Center will be having long-term ownership and it will be professional property management for the property. I'm here to answer any questions and thank you again for the opportunity.
Any questions?
Yeah, well, why is it going to be county water and sewer when, when I see gravity line and water main adjacent property there?
Oh, we've been working with staff over the course of the last two years. The City of Sanford is unable to provide us with adequate water supply and, and for the sewer, and we have letters from staff of your staff saying to the county, saying that they agree with going to the, and Seminole County's willing to provide us more in sewer.
That's news to me. We haven't been told we have an issue with that. We've just recently had this discussion, didn't we?
Well, and we'll get somebody from our staff down to explain that.
Now, what, what kind of fence or? What, what kind of fencing is being used?
I'm going to interrupt you.
Okay.
Because we, in order to explain to the public, we have two votes that will take place. The first one is just on the future land use. And then the second is on the actual zoning and plan. Sometimes we sort of combine those two discussions.
Right.
But if we're going to do that, probably we'll come wherein the parties, even though this one is the place I did work at.
If you're going, if you're going to have testimony, yes, the party should be sworn. That would be any member of the staff and the applicant if you're going to take testimony and, and give answers to specific questions throughout the process.
Okay. So that would make sense to do that now and then that will carry over to the next item?
It will carry to the next item. We'll disagree.
We didn't approve the procedure at the last meeting. We continued it until we had to put it together.
What?
We did not approve the how that you, you see procedures. We continued that. Remember?
We're going to have a workshop on it. I didn't take that as we were not going to do it.
We didn't approve.
The workshop is scheduled for the next session of the commission, but the law applies now, even though the city policies may not be in sync, and I could not recommend the city ignoring the laws and the case law.
And that's, I mean, we adopted that ordinance.
Yes, you adopted an ordinance.
We have the ordinance.
On credit, that will dish matters in January of this year.
Well, it's not law. It might be, it's our attorney's interpretation of case law. It's not a new law.
Okay. But it is the ordinance that we passed. So in order that everything and both, discussion from both pieces can be considered, we resume over that with them.
Yes.
Okay. So we are going to, if you are going to be a party to the decision, which means you are the applicant or staff that will be speaking, or someone else with specific knowledge, I'm going to ask the attorney to explain this part to, to a party as.
A party would be the applicant and any, any consultants that the applicant has hired who will give a professional opinion. The city staff, who has reviewed this and will answer questions, is also a potential witness. If there's any member of the public who just simply wants to come and express an opinion or make a comment or ask a question, they are not parties and do not have to be sworn. They can stand up at the appropriate time and say what they choose to speak for or against the project or ask a question.
Okay. So if I could have everyone who wants to be a party, if you could choose your eyes and state your name. State your, state your name.
Scott Bezos.
Okay. You use where are affirmed as testimony that you're about to give in the matters now at hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Austin, want to hear your question?
I don't see on here where, what kind of fencing is being used? Or law or?
We have an eight-foot masonry wall going on the west side, the entire west side, the north side, and the majority of the east side. And then we agreed at the planning and zoning commission meeting for the carriage code neighbors next door to install six-foot PVC fence or some kind of screening around retention block.
I'm confused. Any clarification? I thought we weren't allowed to ask those questions when we're doing land use. I thought we had to ask those questions on seven C two, not seven C one. Am I incorrect?
We just need to be clear that the first vote will be just on the land use. But because people frequently associate them together, there may be questions that come up that are related to that. And so I'm trying to accommodate that. And because we have a lot of people that want to speak on both items.
But in the past, even, even with the courts judicial and swearing in, we were told not we asked those questions when it's not the land use. Has that changed yet?
I, I may have just changed that.
Okay.
All right. Okay. All right.
Patrick.
Anything else?
Um, so basically an eight-foot wall.
Six foot, sir.
Oh, I thought you said eight.
Six.
You said six foot PVC.
No, six-foot masonry wall on the west side and the north side and coming down the majority of the east side and then transitioning to most likely PVC.
Around the pump?
Around the pump.
Okay. And what about a consideration for lighting?
Lighting will be addressed through the site plan process in accordance with the City of Sanford Land Development Code.
Is all our staff about that? Sure looks like we're cramming a lot in one little space, but that's just me.
Any other questions for that?
Yes. So this is an apartment complex and I just want to clarify, you said that there, there will be opportunity for ownership?
No, ma'am.
Okay, what was the ownership?
So it's long-term ownership by the Sharing Center. So we're not just a developer coming into town. We're, we're here local and will be owning of this and operating it long term.
Anything else?
I have a few more, but I think it needs to be.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, thank you for now. Mr. Simpson, do you have anything?
Okay. Ilyhson, planning director, I am going to split the two parts up. I was going to wait until after the public had the opportunity to speak, but, so before you are the two parts, the first part being the land use amendment where there is a split land use right now, and we're looking to consolidate it into one so that they can move forward and develop the two properties because the one in the back is very limited on their ability to access. The second part is a rezone. The rezone is to multi, the rezone is to PB for the use of a multifamily. The multifamily has been designed generally to meet our criteria with the fee variances that you'll find within your, your chef report. I don't know if you have any direct questions upfront or if you want to save them until after the public vote.
Question? Okay, thank you. Do we have someone from utilities that can explain why, or we have someone from planning that can explain?
It's basically, just has to do with the line capacities of what's there now. It's not that we as a city don't have water. It's the lines that could feed this from our side are less than those that the county can provide for out of long range. So we're doing a de minimis change between jurisdiction as to who's going to provide the water and sewer, just because of water and sewer that can be provided to them for its more capacity. Need anything more than that, then I have to talk to you. But I think that, I mean, it's basically just what we have in the area canceled.
The pipe size.
Yeah. Volume, pipe size, all of that. So it's just, we need to pull up something that brings it down in front of the property so we run additional lines. We sort of, you know, give it the purpose for the project.
Commissioner Austin, give us that time. All right. Andrew Lannan? And a reminder to the public, the first item we are voting on is just the future land use.
Yes, sir. I think that I need to reserve my comments for C two.
Okay.
Yes, sir, because the legislative item is one.
Okay. Callie Isaac?
I'm just speaking for, for me to get up there. I'm a homeowner. I live on Tucker. I'm at four oh seven Tucker. So I'm the second house from the end. I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm not filled with the idea of having all these apartments crammed in. If you're in this space, it's really not, it doesn't feel like that big of a space. My biggest concern is that the, the code, it needs to be a hundred feet from our property line to where their start, and if you look at the plans, it's only, it's only saying like twenty-one feet from the, from our side, from the Seminole Estates side. So we have all these mature trees that, and power lines that we're just concerned that will be tear, you know, just torn down. I mean, they're just, you know, these trees have been there forever and my backyard isn't that big. I have like forty feet from my, literally my house to my fence line and then, you know, I'm looking at this and there's like sewage processing, like basically my back door. So, you know, I'm just opposed to this whole thing. I think it's just too big of a project for that space. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a couple of other cards, but they all listed C two specifically. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm Cory Downing. I live at four oh three Tucker Drive. Our biggest concern here is that the setbacks that provided in your codes are not being provided to the home, the property owners along Seminole Estates. The setbacks are only twenty-five feet on the buffers and there should be fifty. The setbacks from our property line should be a hundred for the first apartment. They're only twenty-five feet between them. They say they're going to build three foot off our property line, build it up three foot, put a six-foot wall on top of it. That is so unacceptable to all of us as property owners. The only one in this whole deal that seems to be hitting even close to a hundred feet is carriage code, and they're not property owners. All of us are property owners and we're very concerned about this. This is a very heavily mowed area with trees that have been there for over a hundred years, which our power grids run through, and that the drip lines in these trees have connected into our trees. It's a big concern of mine, but we just want, you know, as developers, they should buy, buy, I'm sorry, follow the guidelines just like any other developer. You know, follow the codes and stay within them. Right now, we're looking at these plans that they see the, for the master plan and nowhere in there are they giving us the footage that we use as property owner. And that's very stressful of all of us right now. I mean, all other developers, if this was someone else, I just don't think there should be any, you know, exclusions for any, I don't even know how to say it. I'm so upset about it. I just said that the buffers need to be what, what y'all places them to. This was brought up in the voting meeting that they want to code. They said it was due to the size of the property and the shape of the property to why they want to code to the property owners. That's not our problem nor the city's. They need to build and develop within the codes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone wish to speak to this item? Did the applicant want to respond to anything at this point? Okay. Then I'll close this public hearing. Bring in the Commissioner's direction.
Please approve.
We're only going to.
Second.
Motion second, the audience. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Austin?
I'm just not comfortable with it. We're making six exceptions to the setbacks inconsiderable.
But that's not all the point.
Are you okay with the change of the land use? And I understand it's, it's all tied together, but it's two separate votes.
Right, but I, I don't even like change of the land use because that allows. It allows us to be dumb.
allows us to be dumb.
The problem is, you know, we've got these codes, and you've got these codes in place, and codes have been in place, you know, land development has been in place for a long time, and everybody that comes to us just wants to, you know, it's like, we've been here for a reason, we're going to come in and negotiate how close we can come to your code, is, is it. And I completely agree, some of this is, some of this I'm not comfortable with either. However, I also understand we're just voting on the land use change, that a lot of, of my issues are going to come up in the next.
Right, correct, and that's, that's what the part that's confusing me because, and I agree with Patrick, and I have a lot of concerns when it comes to C2, but technically, you would have to have a legal reason why you, why you shouldn't change, uh, the land use in order to deny it, so that's the reason why I'm not denying it, because I don't have a legal reason for the land use. Now for C2, that's a completely different. And from what I've been told, that this is what we have to focus on for the first one, right, not anything else?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if it does turn to our staff, the change in future land use is appropriate.
Well, yeah.
Any discussion?
Well, we don't have to, we don't always have to agree with that. The change of land use, I don't, I'm not, I'm not so sure is appropriate, that, that land use was put there for a reason. But yet we always just rubber stamp.
So how would you legally deny it?
Well, the motion currently is, is your motion to approve, um, there hasn't been a vote called, so.
Okay.
Make it out of motion.
Well, I, it would be whether it's compatible or not, is the key.
Right.
I think it's compatible land use, then. Alright, so let's go ahead and call the vote on this, all in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye, I follow the motion.
You see it there?
Oh, aye.
And all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes three to two. Brings us to ordinance 4793, Mr. Paul.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, so we stand for Florida, providing for rezoning of a park or hill property, building approximately five point seven seven acres in size located at sixty four ninety-eight North Longway in Bullard. This property is located within the Sanford City limits, from agriculture and restricted commercial to planned development. Providing for findings and intent, providing for taking and implementing administrative actions, providing for adoption of a map I reference, providing for complex, providing for separability, providing for notification, providing for effective land. This is a landmark reserve city commission, on June sixth of twenty twenty-four, the city's planning and zoning commission took a vote, had the city, recommended city commission approve first reading of ordinance number forty-seven ninety-three, request to rezonate five point seven acres of private address of sixty four ninety-three North Longway, Redding Grove, Bollard, Culture and Restricted Commercial to Planned Development. There are a number of conditions listed in the staff report, and it's now for the city commission consideration.
This is quite an initial, um, action, and so if there's anything to disclose, I did meet with, um, the applicant, Yvonne and her staff, this morning, and discussed the project, and, um, some of the things involved. I think most of it is us, the, um, that's why, anyone else?
I bet none.
Oh, I mean.
None.
So this is a public hearing, um, are we going with staff first?
Good evening, Yvonne.
Evening.
Okay, um, I'm not quite sure where to start. So with the, obviously the, the land use first reading was approved, can always be denied on second reading if, after all proceedings, the commission determines that that's not the best route to go. But given that it is against 407, it has various means of commercial along the way, the general carriagists found to be the most compatible for that, that intensity of the roadway. It does come up backwards to the north, up toward the residential, which, um, the only access needs is through law breaking. So it's one cohesive property essentially, so making it one land use is where we need to proceed from. Now, um, what they've designed does reduce the buffers significantly in most areas, they have provided the required wall, but the distance separations, um, fall short, as noted by some of the representatives from the neighborhood, that it is a, a very irregularly shaped property. Right, that is, it's irregularly shaped, so it's, it's challenged to give the setbacks to the necessary. If you were to maintain a single-family land use and zoning, well, it's an absolute, with the single-family, um, and the neighborhood commercial that are on it now, and built it out to max, you would hit seventy-six units. What they're proposing is seventy-nine. Of the units that they're proposing, they're two-story, no more or less than a typical single-family home today. If they were to develop it as in a very compact, single-family subdivision as we've been doing, those houses would be permitted to be within fifteen to twenty feet of the property line, with no buffer, no wall and no separation. So given that these apartments as design, not the setbacks, but the apartments as designed actually come as close to our regulations as any apartment complex in recent years, um, with, the majority of ours are four-story towers, they, you know, they have community areas in the middle, they close in around properties, and they make them as dense as possible. This one is two-story units, small cluster homes like we have in our code, and they've tried to design to the best of their ability with the parking courts surrounding each smaller building, and then they separate the apartments themselves from the residential properties with the use of garages.
Just the other side, though?
Maybe, maybe not. Um, they separate the buildings, the two-story buildings, the single-family properties along the border with the single-story garages. So it's also served as an additional buffer in addition to a wall.
Where's that?
So along the, the borders themselves, you see the smaller buildings with the X's, those are parking facilities versus residential properties.
What about the front, those are buildings, uh, the back of those buildings look right over those homes, right?
They're twenty-five feet back and they're only two-story. So if they were single-family homes, they would, they could be two-story as well with no issue, and they wouldn't have to be twenty-five feet, they would only have to be twenty, and in some ways.
But those are built on property that's not, is never single-family. Only the back part is zoned for single-family.
The front is zoned neighborhood commercial, well, it's currently, right, it could do commercial, you could have a restaurant, which could be as close as twenty feet from that property line. You could have a, a hotel there if you wanted, you could have a number of things that would be far more intrusive than the, the lower impact residential that's proposed.
We can argue intrusive all day long.
Right, in terms of traffic and noise, though, some of the other uses that could build a good commercial property could create far, it could generate far more noise.
Why only a six-foot wall, I, I could look over that. But the property.
That's standard, that's the standard, that's our buffer requirement is a six-foot wall. And then on top of that, it'll be taller because they are raising it due to flood requirements these days for elevation of property.
Right, but it still allows them easily to look over.
The multifamily will have the six, and then on the backside of that, the other side should have more than six, if not eight or nine. So it'll buffer them that much more, wouldn't it? Okay, so if you have the, as long as the wall is built on the elevation of the apartment, you'll have the residential, the elevation that's added, and then the wall sits on top of that, so it'll be the six feet plus whatever dirt is added, and then the residential, so theirs will probably be closer to eight.
So that, that, that high of an elevation is also going to, going to become a real water problem for the surrounding neighborhood?
Not if the, not if the stormwater is designed properly, like, they are supposed to require, they're supposed to retain anything that's on site, and then a wall also contains that, so it keeps the water within the property.
The wall's only across the back. It runs right around the wall and.
No, the wall runs the entire length of the west side, and then all across the north side, and then halfway down the east side.
Okay, and then the, we teach in pond, it's what's surrounded by PVC.
Correct, and that just has to do with maintenance of the pond to make sure that it can be accessed.
Where is the buffer requirement coming from our code? If somebody took, um, the paper, I used to have in my drawer that had the buffer.
It's from Schedule J.
Okay.
Schedule J has compatibility standards, and it's commercial, industrial and multifamily as they're adjacent to residential use.
Okay, but industrial to the single-family is only seventy-five feet, where is the hundred?
Multifamily to a single-family.
Multifamily to a single-family.
I didn't bring my laptop up with me, but I can grab it if you want me to.
With Schedule J?
Schedule J, and, um, it's the compatibility standards. And I think I know them, but I don't want to call them under oath without the laptop.
Let me ask, oh, sorry.
Wonky's taking that up. Mm-hmm. I've got a question about the units per building.
Okay.
Okay, so it's saying our requirement is no more than eight dwelling units per building, and theirs is up to sixteen units per building, a one-hundred percent increase.
Right, most of our buildings are two-hundred units. Like, if you look at all the ones that are on Lionheart Road, they're anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred units per building. These are sixteen, so very small.
Seven buildings with seventy-nine units total. And fifty detached garages?
Covered spaces, fifty percent of the space is provided, um, I'm not sure that they're all covered parking, not garages.
Okay.
They're like, we've been doing with a lot of our multifamily, they're not, um, solid garages, they're the raised park courts for covered parking.
Okay, so these are garages, your park courts?
Correct.
It's saying zero direct access garages, however, fifty detached garages provided. That equates to sixty-three percent of the units having covered parking, so it's just, it's not actually garages?
They're not garages, they're just covered parking. I'm not as consistent with what we've done with a lot of onlookers and approvals.
So essentially the covered park courts are backing up to these houses.
In the back.
In the back, yeah.
Right, so the six-foot wall with the covered parking behind it, separated by a drive lane, a series of parking, sidewalk, landscaping, then the buildings.
Got it. But our code says no more than eight dwellings per building, is that correct?
That is how it's currently written, correct, we have not had anyone need that in twenty years.
Well, why do we even have it?
If we need to, we're in the process of rewriting the multifamily, unfortunately, some of the other regulations have taken precedent and the multifamily, majority of multifamily comes in as a planned development in New York.
Yeah.
So in doing that, it's the negotiation between the city.
Yeah, it comes in as a PD because they want to negotiate it, because most of them can't meet the code.
It, right, in this case, it doesn't really apply in terms of density, but if you want density, like we do over by the mall and in certain other high-intensity areas of the city, you can't put only eight units per building, you would never meet the density requirements that are, are necessary, so. This allows, like, the PD process allows design changes, but in, in general, this particular plan is far closer to our code than anything that we've reviewed.
Got it.
But it's also, the first that I know of, that is being built right on top of it.
Yeah, plenty of resi- they, they run along seventeen ninety-two with the residences behind them, the reinforced re-apartments. Most of the ones on seventeen ninety-two are garden-style and they have but residential land use.
Not the newer ones that we agreed last year.
The downtowns behind, um, San Juan, which prompted our change. And that was before my time, that was.
So, I mean, there are, there are a number of three, at least three-story apartments that have but residential, single-family. We did add these, um, changes, and they were based upon the large house or big house type apartment complex. There's one in the city that's somewhat designed light up, but I don't even think it only has eight units per building, but it's Upper Lakes, which later on went on to be condominiums. So the rest of our apartments have far more units per building than just eight. So yes, it, we understand that the, the multifamily code has to be amended, but like I said, there are some others that have taken precedent, a lot of the procedural things in our articles are in the process of amending, so.
Is this your district?
Okay, setback is to vertical construction, is that correct?
Setback is to the primary structures or accessory structures depending on how it's built. In the multifamily, I don't think they account for carports because it wasn't the trend at the time. Um, but the setbacks are to the primary buildings.
Okay, so in the back, we've got.
I think it's almost ninety.
Seventy to ninety foot.
Yeah.
Setback. And the front does.
Some of those buildings are twenty-five feet off the wall. But the neighborhood commercial zoning would allow for multifamily through conditional use process only or through a PD process, it would also allow for housing. And then live local would allow them to serve all of that and build fifty dwelling units per acre and four stories tall. Because it is a commercial zoning. So just in reviewing all the elements and the components, sure, there could be a less intense use, but there could also be a far more intense use at this location.
Okay, and I, I, I appreciate that, um, Ms. Simpson, but, um, don't you think, um, don't you think it gets a little old saying, well, it could be worse? So we're, we're going to go ahead and allow all this? It could be a lot worse, but we're going to go ahead and let them do this. I, I, I'm really not, I'm not.
Well, this is, okay, how about I change it up and say, this is far more compatible than something else could be? It's not that it could be worse, it's just in terms of compatibility, from a land use perspective, this use is far more compatible to the adjacent uses than something else that we could build in what's already existing, we change nothing.
Well, I, I go back to, um, the current issue, uh, in, in District One, uh, where we were trying, uh, we had before us a commercial property right next to a residential property, and we made them do all kinds of changes to that commercial property to appease one resident. And right here, we've got, I'm, I'm not going to take the time to count it, but we've got at least twenty, uh, residents, intimately connected to this property, um, and we're not really doing much for them at all. We're not, we're not doing much for them at all.
Okay.
I, I think the wall needs to be higher, um, I'm concerned about the lighting, and I'm, I'm not even sure about the parking, but, uh, you know, I know there's not much we can do about it, but.
Well, the parking actually needs parking code.
I know, but.
This is the first apartment complex that has had, that has not come forth and asked for a reduction.
Right, but we have, we have fifty-one units that are two or three bedroom, and I can almost guarantee. And I can almost guarantee you that's every two or three cars per each of those units.
And they count for two cars per unit across the board, which is what our standard is.
Right, but those three bedrooms are most likely gonna have three vehicles and those two bedrooms might two. And so then where are all those extra cars gonna go? And Lord forbid if anybody ever has family get together or on this property. Where do they go?
I, I know it's in here, but you're saying people are searching, what are the approximate sizes of these units?
They range from a one-bedroom at five-fifty to a three-bedroom at eleven-seventy.
Fifty-one, a three-bedroom at eleven-seventy?
Yeah.
Wow.
So like sixty-one of the units are thousands per unit of work.
Geez, that's small for a three-bedroom.
I agree with Patrick when he was, made the comment when he was in C-One, that you think that it's a lot crammed into one space. There are a lot of items on here where they haven't met the P D, so there's plenty of ways to either request that developer changes those or to deny it because you have legal bases on it. We went so hard for that one district in, in, that one resident District One because their commissioner wasn't going back there. And I didn't, and you have plenty of room here.
And you, but you also had backup.
Huh?
You also had backup up here.
Yeah, and I'm with you, you did, yeah, I'm with you. That's why I thought it out there, Patrick. I thought it out there.
And look, I, I need to put this on the record. I, I appreciate the, the purpose of this property. I appreciate the owners of this property and what they're trying to do for our community. It's not that I'm anti-workforce housing, it's not that I'm anti-anything positive. But, but unfortunately, and, and yeah, I, I could sit up here and go, well, most of these guys live in the county, so, you know. Why do I care? But I'm trying to put myself, like everything else I do up here, in their shoes. And if I'm in their shoes...
Like, well, staff is just presenting the application that's been provided with the layout and design with the information that we have. And if the commission chooses to recommend denial for reasons such as the compatibility or not meeting the requirements within the land development regulations, that's the, that's the priority of the commission.
Let's move on with public hearing. How could you not have an answer to this question about immunity? Because I've already seen what they have. The top line. Do you have any questions now for the sentencing?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have the applicant? And did applicant want to...
He's only speaking.
Okay. Then, Mr. Allen?
Mayor members, City Commission, thank you so much. Did applicant speak? I was temporarily insane for about ten years with the city attorney over here. So I'm familiar with these processes and so I saw you working your way through the legislative process earlier, now quasi-judicial. All reason I'm here is I'm a half of the sharing center, not as an attorney, I'm doing this pro bono. As Commissioner Austin pointed out, a few things that are excellent. The benefit is the workforce, obviously, you know, that's the, and so going back a long time, because not only am I gigantic when I'm old. In nineteen eighty-six, my brother, older brother, graduated from an elite school as a tight end with a scholarship. And cool mouth, and couldn't get a job and lived at home for three years. So this is the kind of housing for, you know, nurses and firemen and stuff like that, so that they can service these people. That's a reciprocal benefit to the community. That's the legitimate public purpose, Commissioner May, you were asking about. So that's what this serves. And also, as far as intensity, Commissioner Austin, that's absolutely correct that you're worried about your own district, which I completely appreciate. And you need to do so. And listen to every single person that's here today to address these items. The biggest issue, though, is your Director of Planning has said the intensity for this property could be enhanced more than what's proposed. And since you already approved the comprehensive plan change, it's, excuse me, a legitimate public purpose is here. I recommend that you approve, and I ask you to, so, and thank you.
Kelly Isaacs?
Oh, I respect.
Did you wanna speak again? Okay, Lori Downing?
Hi, it's a pleasure meeting you, seeing you all again, you know, before the city commission, which I'm, I'm a committee, I've been in several counties, you know, trusting. I have some pictures here, I'd like to present, if I could, of the property lines and the power grid, which runs directly on those properties. It sets all ours, if there's just a few of them, if you could look at them and see what we're up against as far as clearing and, and, you know, the dangers of it being so close to these tree lines in our property lines. You know, where they're running and the drift edges are in a very, like, the tops. If I could, if...
You can give those to the clerk, but we will not be able to give them back to you.
That's fine.
Can't Chris put them up there, or do we have to pass them up?
Yeah, Chris can't put them up on the screen?
Also, I'd just like to add, you know, like he's, Mr. Austin, you said, they're, they're not preserving anything for the residents. They're just wanting to come in there instead of a brick wall up against our back fence line. That's not something we want those guys. They're not preserving any of these, the tree line for us. They're not giving us anything. They're basically saying, okay, we're twenty-five feet off here for our theme, they're doing a lot of things. We don't want that. We want the code to be followed. And we understand, knowing anyone, I was a single mother who bought my home. So myself, I worked very hard, I sacrificed a lot for this home. I understand the need for lower income housing, all of us do, but not in my backyard like that. I don't, I think it's a conflict of interest of both parties. Because there is a different way, you know, style of living that you're placing upon us. And we're just asking that, you know, the codes be, you know, set forth. And they're there, and they'll just help us out and, you know, help and make me sure that we're a fine plot. And that's all we're asking. And I understand it could be commercial. I'd rather have a commercial building back there than a, I'm telling you. I'd rather have commercial property back there and know what I'm dealing with on a daily basis than to have different folks who are in and out all the time, all hours of the night. And again, lighting, these, this parking area is, you know, I mean, there's a lot of factors here. And as property owners, I just don't think we're getting, getting any, any help from them. They say they wanna be good neighbors, but I don't see where you're enabling these little, put a six-foot wall three foot higher on my property line, it's gonna flood my property. Because there's no, there's no vegetation there or anything in between our property line and this brick wall, it's catching the, this line. So where else is it gonna go but coming into our yards? You know, there's no proper drainage in this area at all. You're taking all the foliage and all the trees. But that's what our backyards look like, right, this present, the power grids, and God bless the power company, other years they had a great job.
You're gonna get closed.
Okay.
I just didn't want you to be alarmed when it goes off.
Okay. All right, stay in.
So, so I've got a question. Nothing, it's only for you. Well, actually, he wanted to let everyone speak, didn't he? I'm sorry, I'll wait, I'll hold it.
Michelle Task?
Michelle Task, I'm 01 Tucker. I don't know, I've lived there before, for both of the things we, thirty-seven. My thing is also, don't hurt, but, and they said they're gonna put carports back there. And everybody, I don't know, hang out in the backyard, but we're gonna have all this exhaust and noise. Also, you know, the, I have had a block wall surrounded with my property. And then we're gonna build up three foot, my wall's only four foot. And then they're gonna put another wall on top of that. And my yard, um, if you get a hard rain, it floods. And I don't want any more flooding, I've got all of that. So I don't want them there at all after I go. And I go and put whatever everybody else is gonna say.
Did you say that you already have a wall in, in your backyard?
It's, it was built with someone.
I think a lot of them did, right?
Um, no.
No?
No. It's kind of three foot, but, they said they're gonna, or four foot, I mean, whatever it is. But it's only gonna blow it out, it's gonna be up to my wall, and then, there's no woods, there's none. There's nothing, lights in our backyard, the noise from the, the big highway out there. You know, like Howard said, the, you know, color emissions. And the noise, I can enjoy my family, if they're all, I mean, if they're...
Right, your backyard, your lifestyle, et cetera. And you are gonna be hit very hard, you're gonna have it on both sides.
Yes, we are. My family bought that house in sixty-six.
Navy people?
Yes.
Great, anything else? Thank you. Zab Watson?
So, how can you guys read signs? Um, Zab Watson, about Central Great Baywood. Sorry. I live at Central Great Baywood Circle. So, a couple of things I just wanted to bring up with this whole plan. Since the first meeting that we've had, I feel like there's just been, kind of, I won't say misleading information, but, you know, it's garages and it's carports and then it's six foot and it's eight foot, then it's six foot, then it's low income housing. It's not low income housing, so like, what, what's going on, you know? So I think there is just like, kind of caused a lot of uncertainty with like me and the neighbors, because we don't really know. You're getting told something different at each meeting, essentially. And then also, I wanted to touch on the buffering and landscaping and the things that pretty much everyone's already been talking about. But according to the Comprehensive Community Growth Plan and Policy F L U one point one, point one-two, it does say that the, we need to promote community appearance, natural amenities, and urban science principles. I don't see how jamming as many homes into the space is really doing that. If you drive down Long Ridge and it seems like just pretty much every spot you can build, we're building. And that's concerning. In addition to that, the density of the area, I wish I had photos to share with you guys, but just over the last week and a half, we've had so many storms and my backyard literally like floods from regular rain. And it's coming up like on the porch, the front yard, same thing, it's, it's a lot. So we already have off of Tucker, some single-family homes being built currently, I think it's about twenty of them. So then you add in this proposed development, and I'm just really concerned about how that's gonna affect the drainage and just, you know, those types of concerns, so... And then also, Policy F L U one point one sixteen states to protect residential areas from adverse impacts of transmission and land use. So when we're being told that it's only gonna be a twenty-five foot gap and, you know, bare minimum six-foot wall, that doesn't feel like it's protecting the integrity of the existing residence there. So that's something I wanted to bring up. Also, and there's another part in Policy F L U one point two-one, just kind of talking about density again and minimizing the impact of flood hazards. So, I'm just gonna be prepared.
No, go ahead and finish up.
Oh, sorry, I was just also gonna bring it, because I did look over the Schedule J code and so at the last meeting, we did ask like, you know, what is the landscaping buffer going to be like? Are you gonna play, you know, this, these little, we have hundred-year-old trees back there. So that's pretty significant to not only just take down for coverage or drainage, but just historically, you know, preservation-wise, so... Yeah, that's all I wanna say, and just thank you guys again for your time.
Thank you.
Carol Sierra, did you wanna speak on this item or on a different item?
Uh, please.
Okay.
So hi, my name is Carol Sierra. I actually work for Workforce Development, career solicitor at Florida. So I know very much how much we help the community in everything that we do. And we do partner with the sharing centers so that I know how familiar we are with the people that we serve. And fortunately, I don't want them in my backyard. Because that is a very concrete-type space to put so many units with the people that I do see in their front yard and lawn with. When I drive by to work, it's like, it is very concerning with having such a short wall, which will eventually be only a three-foot buffer for mine, which I'm actually in block thirty-nine. To add insult, I cut a tree in my yard because it was dead. And when I decided to ask if I could cut the yard behind mine, which is a decent property, which is still considered my land, because I can't, the guy told me that I cannot just uproot because the branches go under my concrete and we rip up my concrete that I have on my cobblestone. So my other concern is, are they going to cut if it gets approved, or are they just gonna rip up trees? Because that's a whole different issue. I do not have any water issues right now at the moment, because I do have a lot of land and a lot of trees that will heat up that water and it's great. Once that's gone, that's a whole different problem. I've had in the land issues with people jumping over my fence and me having to pull a cots. And I do only have a six-foot fence wall right now. So not having so much more than what I already have is not really gonna keep me and my kids safe when playing in my own property that I own. It's very unfortunate that we continue to raise issues in multiple occasions and visits and they just keep getting like, okay, let's, let's work around it. Patrick, thank you very much for making it obvious that certain times we do bend the rules and it's okay sometimes. But in this one, it is affecting so many houses on that side, it's concerning to all of us. As the other person said, we already have another build going on in Tucker's where my kids have to be driven to the bus stop because they can no longer walk because of the heavy truck traffic that is there. Not having, not even a sidewalk to walk on, they have to walk on the pond. So now that I have also another issue where my eighteen-year-old just learned how to drive and has a license, and is already freaking out of getting out of that... So, now that I have also another issue where my eighteen year old just learned how to drive and has a license, and is already freaking out of getting out of the exit into Runway, and now having to also worry about another traffic coming in or out of there, so close together to the entrance or exit of, our community is concerning. So, there's a lot of issues that we all are concerned about, but, those are the main ones, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who just wishes to speak?
Scott Banta again. Um, I'd like to address some of the issues. Uh, first off, on any flooding issues, there's specific city requirements and state requirements that we're not allowed to drain on anybody else's property, so that would be covered. The, uh, lighting could be directed away from the homes, and if there were, you know, as Eileen mentioned, other single family homes that were ten or fifteen feet behind these houses, they would have significant lighting issues without any, any, uh, wall barrier, et cetera. Uh, the traffic issue, it's the only one place you can put the entrance on this, and we worked with Seven Hole County, because it's a county road. In order to have proper, uh, separation from Tucker and from the entrance to Carriage Cove, the, um, access was directed into the middle of the property, which is over seven hundred feet away. Um, the multifamily provides the least amount of traffic under I T E, traffic generation. But based on some of the concerns of the neighbors, et cetera, we would respectfully ask that you table this for a month, and let us see if we can address a couple of those concerns, and then come back to you in, uh, two or three meeting period.
I would think that'd be great, if you can figure out these setbacks and maybe, you know, frequently, you know, frequently, if, if there's a way to leave some vegetation to, to provide for not just wall, but, but a, but a nice dense land, vegetation buffer, would, would really be beneficial, I would think.
One of the, you know, as, as I mentioned at the planning and zoning meeting, we, we really do wanna be a good neighbor. And we really do think the ultimate, this density is a thirteen units per acre, which could go significantly higher under live local. You know, we could go up to twenty, thirty units per acre, or whatever, which, you know, which would put us up significantly higher than the seventy, seventy-nine units. So, in terms of that, we were also, most of these units are designed as townhouse style. There's very few stat flats. So, the, the majority of the units that are inside the, uh, from the ends, on the inside units are townhouse units. So, from a density perspective, it's about the lowest you could do relative to that in the traffic. But what we can do during this, let's say, month or six weeks that, that you grant us, if you're kind enough to grant us that, is take a look at our grading and some of the existing vegetation, and see what we can come up with in terms of providing some additional buffering. Again, the, the city regulations on some of the buffering, when you look at the triangular shape, almost make the property totally undevelopable unless we go into some other type of commercial or high density use, like a four story, three or four story building in the middle of it. And I'm not sure that the neighbors are gonna be real happy with that either. So, um, relative to that, the trees that are behind their houses, you know, obviously, I can't do a whole lot about that. The, uh, power lines are not on our property. So, um, in terms of the power line easement is, is basically not our issue, because we don't own it. And, uh, it's on their property that we've been easing. So, some of those things, you know, we can't address, some of the things we may be able to address, though we would respectfully ask that you, uh, allow us to talk for a month or six weeks.
I would certainly agree with that.
Um, and, and during that, um, I think, I want us to all mention the things we would like, that concern us that we haven't already mentioned. Um, one of the things that we talked about today was the elevation change coming off of the property line, and being able to get that further from the property line. Um, I think also, being able to have undisturbed buffer, that are not, that, um, you can avoid taking out any of the trees within that buffer. You know, which obviously wouldn't be able to change elevation, so that would, um, be, be an issue for you to have to look at. And, um, you know, when I first looked at this, and then the second, we, the carports to the garages there, you know, right behind, that's, you know, that actually acts as a little buffer between the building, but then I realized how little vegetative, vegetative buffer there is between those and the, and the property line. So, I'm not sure if those accomplished everything we were hoping for. But I think my biggest concern is the, where you only have a twenty-five foot setback.
I understand. We, in, in looking at that relative to the wall, for example, you know, we're gonna have to have a footer underneath that.
I understand.
So, the footer, you know, call it three feet, and then the wall going up, so there's gonna be, some of that is gonna be totally disturbed because of the wall requirement. So, um, I mean, that's basically a city requirement, not a development requirement. So, I mean, we can take a look and see what we could do in terms of saving, but in, in terms of most development, if the commercial, et cetera, I mean, everything's gonna be wiped out on most of the sites, which you've obviously seen in this, which is all the development that's happened all throughout the city, so.
But we'd like to keep, um, even if that requires moving the wall, um, and putting some buffer outside the wall. You know, that's, that's something we can look for.
Uh, we'd be happy to talk to Eileen and Karen and staff on those type of items and see what possible compromises we can come up with that makes sense to the neighbors and to the city.
Okay. Anyone else have any things that they haven't already mentioned? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Close the public hearing, and the commission for motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue. Break a motion.
Right.
A month. So, I'll make a motion to continue, uh, to the second meeting in July, is that at a time?
Yes. Can we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, that's a moment. So, make a motion to continue until the second, um, meeting in July, which is the fourth Monday in July.
Twenty second.
Thank you, July twenty second.
Second. Yeah, motion, second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That brings us to Resolution thirty-two fifty-three. Yes, Mr. Mayor, the City Commission staff recommends to approve Resolution thirty-two fifty-four to amend the budget an amount of net fixed savings of one million fifty thousand dollars to increase utility repair and maintenance on thirty-two operations.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Masley, Resolution thirty-two fifty-four, Mr. Mayor, City Commission staff recommends City Commission approve Resolution thirty-two fifty-four to amend the city budget in an amount of five million dollars to move funds into a utility capital account to fund the gold door hybrid infrastructure project.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Mr. Masley, Resolution thirty-two fifty-five, yes, Mr. Mayor, City Commission staff recommends City Commission approve Resolution thirty-two fifty-five to amend the utility budget in an amount of seven hundred and seven, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and award ten fifty, and the total amount of three, two million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars as a loan responsible bidder to fund the state road forty-six utility adjustment project.
Motion to approve.
A motion.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Masley, Resolution thirty-two fifty-six. Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Commission, this is the approval for the new water treatment camp and facilities camp. If this is discussed during the work session, the staff recommends City Commission approve Resolution thirty-two fifty-six and Resolution thirty-two sixty-one.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Masley. Resolution thirty-two fifty-seven, I think we wanted to continue. Okay, can I get a motion to continue?
Move to, move to continue, um, to the first meeting in July?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Masley, Resolution thirty-two fifty-eight. Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Commission, City staff recommend City Commission approve Resolution number thirty-two fifty to amend the budget in an amount of net fixed savings of two hundred thousand dollars and authorize the current services, such as budgetary service, for citywide tree trimming and mitigation.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Masley, Resolution thirty-two fifty-nine. Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Commission, City staff of City Commission approve Resolution thirty-two fifty-nine relating to the funding of the Public Park Commission by the community redevelopment agency for two public park projects totaling sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Yay.
Questions or motion?
Move to approve, second.
A motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Masley, Resolution thirty-two fifty. Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Commission, City staff see City Commission approve to amend the classification pay plan by the adoption of Resolution thirty-two sixty, and this is a request to add a point two five, a quarter, full-time equipment to a half-time, part-time maintenance worker to effect the, um, maintenance of the city facilities.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any internal comments?
I have no additional items.
Any questions reported?
The, um, Sanford Airport Authority would like to, um, pass their joint work session budget meeting with the case on August twenty-sixth.
I'm fine with that.
Is that work for everybody?
That's the work of me.
Yeah.
So, this would be, would we be doing an early work session, or would this be the four o'clock portion of the work session? I don't know, I'll let you know. And that's all that happened. What is this?
Sitting here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two items. One, um, sent to us email, um, they're announcing that some pieces now on the gravity sewer system, they were going off of the vacuum system, so they are now on the gravity vacuum sewer system. And then, secondly, at the last meeting, there was some comments regarding, uh, Commissioner Reagan expressing concern about the timing for peeling the up, although three businesses are still on the gravity. Uh, we discussed having the city have a contract with a plant company, uh, talking of purchasing, they were that because they have to go off to bid, it will take time, I guess, and he notes all three of the businesses, asking them about their thoughts of them being able to contact whoever they want, and simply them submitting the bill to the city, see if you can remember from the city. I've heard one, um, respondent saying that that was working fine, and I have not heard from the other two. But I just wanted to let the.
One sort of re, so.
Now, just one.
Two.
Two. So, so, have we heard some copies, do we, are they, are, are, are they working ready over there?
I have not heard any copies. Mr. Johnson, have you heard?
Um, no, but we did check the system after the rest of them, and everything was working fine, and it was installed before the weekend, and we had heard.
How long will you?
All right. One down, two to go. That's all. Question, Brad?
Okay, I have a question first, because I don't know the, the legal way to do this. I just had to vote nay for the continuation. I cannot talk to the commission outside of this meeting, so can I clarify, or no?
No.
Okay. I saw one person, I, that is the reason why I was opposed. This one's about to be, okay. Um, congratulations to, uh, Commissioner Patrick Austin, um, for four more years as, um, the District Three, um, Commissioner, and I wanted to say it publicly. There are some times when Patty and I both look at you cross eyed, um, and sometimes when I wanna do this to you. However, um, you wear your heart on your sleeve, you are extremely passionate, you hold those in leadership accountable, which I appreciate. You're very knowledgeable and involved in a great representative, and I am proud to sit next to you for the next two years. Um, so, congratulations.
Really, she's talking about my failure, not anyone else.
Yep, you failed. Um, your, uh, your evaluation, we're gonna mark that.
Okay. Yes, congratulations, Commissioner Austin.
Okay, um, I'm, all right, I wanna ask for, uh, permission to use the District One public funds for a public purpose for the T K S back to school funding. Um, but before I do that, I want to make it known that it is really hard to get, uh, sponsorships right now, because everybody is pulling from the same pool. And so, I was wondering when we were going to have that meeting with the C R A, um, regarding, well, it made me think of that when I was asking for sponsors for the teachers. Um, we're gonna be facing that issue when the C R A sunsets. And we were supposed to have that conversation, a joint meeting with the C R A, and I don't remember having it on my calendar. So, I just wanted to make sure that we are planning to do that, to talk about, you know, what happens to the funds that come back to the city, the funds that go to the county, and then we were having the conversation, you know, um, early in January with, uh, Pamela and Brady Lussard about, uh, the criteria for community partners for our events like, uh, the Arts Festival that we have that bring thousands of people.
Yeah, what are we gonna do?
So, when are we gonna have that conversation? And I thought of that when I went to go ask for sponsorship, and a lot of people were saying they're not going to give to one because they'll have to give to all, or because they've already been asked.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
You know, that, you know, you know, Commissioner Britton, you're so right, and of course, I won't be here, but I am deeply concerned about, about that, because I know how, how much so many of these public, of these special events rely on this, the C R A sponsorships. And I know how much, um, I know, I know, um, I lost my train of thought. Gosh, um, but you're so, you're so right, and I don't know what we're gonna do.
So, are we having that meeting here, or?
I think it's, probably we had set a date for it, but I would, I would point out that most of the events that the C R A sponsors turn a profit.
I get that, but still, we, we've had plenty of them to come and plead their case before us with the profit involved, and some saying that they will cancel the event. That's neither here nor there. I'm just saying, there are some that bring a lot of value to the city of Sanford, and one reason why the C R A funds them is so that they can come and visit and see the progress that the C R A has done. That's what their basis is, so.
And you're making out a real important part, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may. Yeah, a lot of them turn profit, and use that profit for other public purpose. And I know that the, for instance, the St. John River Festival, the Arts uses their profits for, for their art, to, art for kids program at Hopper. I believe the porch best ladies, don't they donate some of their profits also? So, so, so I think we have to be really careful when certain individuals say they make a profit, they make a profit. They do, but they're giving it back to the community.
So.
So, we're, wow. Good, I'm not, I'm not gonna add that comment. I'm not gonna get into that argument, or we can end that discussion before.
Well.
We know, we know what you're saying. Yeah, we know what you're saying. Uh, so, two thoughts. One is, I don't think that needs to be a meeting with the C R A, that needs to be a discussion amongst ourselves. What are we gonna do when they sunset?
No, but the, the, the reason why we were having the joint meeting is because, well, I guess it doesn't even have to be with the C R A, but the C R A executive director to, to talk about, okay, because not everyone is familiar about where those funds, you know.
We need a list of what?
Right. How that's divvied up. Um, not everyone understands that, okay, certain amount goes back to the county, we keep a certain amount. So, I just thought that we were supposed to have a, a meeting to clarify what actually happens after the C R A sunset.
And one, one other thought on this issue, and. And one, one other thought on this issue, and it's just one person, I wonder if we should wait until I'm a member this year because, uh, it will affect them.
And that's all.
But that's not until December ninth.
I know, I, but we're not talking about sunset for two more years.
Well, yeah, but that's gonna come up pretty quick. And listen, or I know we've had the conversation about how all of this money goes back to charity, but it, but I think it's still gonna be, it's still always gonna be part of, of the issue, you know, whether the CRA has its sunset or not, it's still gonna be part of the issue and, and probably what we, we ought to know is which, which organizations do have a, a community benefit and which ones don't.
Well, I think that goes back to something we discussed previously where we just need to decide what our signature events are. What the city's gonna support.
Yes, that's why we call them community partners.
I know, I know. We, we need a media here.
All right, so back to the reason I brought that up was the teachers' funding and the teachers' funding is low, but we're still going to do it. So I'm going to ask the city commission if they would approve four thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty percent, um, pending clarification with extending, um, for the back-to-school teachers' bash for a public purpose. And if anyone would like to donate to the teachers' back-to-school, um, fund, I'm pretty sure the city of Sanford teachers and those that teach in the city of Sanford would appreciate it.
So I'm confused, madam.
Mm-hmm.
The four hundred and, how much?
Four thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars.
That must be what she has.
Is that from your, okay, that's from yours. Okay, so I think what I'm frustrated about is because we just did the ten thousand, is that, um, is that, I wish I knew, I have some money, do you know, if I have anything left?
I thought I had way more than that.
I wish I knew, just do the rest, you all know how much you have left?
I have, uh, twelve thousand dollars.
You're twelve, then you can get big.
Well, I've been trying to work on another project, but I'm not getting any cooperation.
So help somebody teach you. Sheena, I want to help, I just don't know how much I have to help with.
Let me, let me speak to my friends in the audience that aren't helping me and I'll get back to you.
Um, can we, when is this event?
August third.
Lisa, August third.
It's the, the week before that, uh, the teachers' first day back.
Is it, is, so is it all right if, um, since we're just coming up on July, can we, can we give you an amount at the next meeting once we know how much we have?
Yes, I'm only asking, well, you need to ask for it early anyway, but I go through the city, um, and they order the, all of the school supplies through the city and have them delivered here and then staff takes it to the building for the teachers, so.
Well, a second per request.
Oh, yeah, me too.
So let's take care of that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Actually, I did about six thousand. I don't know how, about four thousand. Oh, we, we ran out extremely fast. We opened the doors at eight and by ten, it was gone.
I will definitely help, I just have to know, I don't know if I have five hundred or, something tells me I have about three thousand, but I'm not, I'm just not sure.
But the teachers were so appreciative of it and we even took pictures of badges for those that we didn't have additional supplies for and we took paper out to, um, the schools from other people who had donated. We also had a box in the Sanford information center at the district one office for people to drop off, um, donations, but for those teachers to not have to come out of their pocket and to see that the city, because it wasn't just a district one thing, I made sure that on the flyer, it said it was the city of Sanford and I believe everybody except for the one teacher up here donated, um, last year.
I did, I did.
He's a teacher. So they were, they were very.
If I told you I got stuff to be delivered on Wednesday for you?
Oh, yeah.
You did?
Yes.
All right, that concludes, concludes the district one.
My, my actual money.
Well, yeah, that's wonderful, Art, and I, I'd give some of my actual money too. I mean, it's a, it's a great program. And it's a lot of work.
Uh, just a reminder, I have my, uh, community meeting this Thursday at six and then we gotta do a food giveaway Friday at the Academy Matter. I know we'll leave one more time for this room, but we have my big food giveaway, uh, July the twelfth at Allen Chapel, we'll start that at ten. Just know we'll be about three to four hundred fans, so please, wherever. All right, that's it.
Commissioner Austin?
I am re-elected unopposed, as Commissioner Britton, uh, said. And, um, I'm grateful to serve my birth city another four years and sit here and harass our wood roof every step of the way.
Wait, what did you say about me earlier?
Well, I said.
You don't have to say it.
I said you're, I said you're doing a good job as mayor. But that doesn't mean I always agree. That's it.
There's a problem if we always.
Right.
Commissioner Mike?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, we need a, um, voting delegate for the League of Cities and I understand Commissioner Austin has already signed up to go. Is that correct?
I will carry the torch.
Is that, um, that's just consensus, right? So consensus, uh, go ahead and vote.
Yeah.
All right. And I think I just talked about, you know, I think that over on the, uh.
Uh, can I?
Nope. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if y'all are aware, the National League of Cities is actually meeting in Tampa this year for their annual convention.
In August?
It's in November.
Oh.
Um, and so it's not typically held so close to home. I, I have signed up to go, I think we, I think it would be a good thing for us to be at.
I had him sign me up, but I thought it was in August, so.
August is a state. August is a state.
August is Florida.
So if you're gonna be there in August, you can be the contender, I don't need to go.
Just 'cause she signed up doesn't mean she's going.
You gotta wake up early Saturday morning.
I was there.
You gotta wake up early Saturday morning.
Anything else? Nope. We're adjourned.
Huh?
All right, I have lots of meetings to attend to.
I don't know if I'm really, keep doing what I'm doing, you can say anything, miss. Chris, we got five of them.
Yes, sir.